We may change, we may flip-flop back again.
That'll be flexible.
So we have two, just for the audience, we have two agendas. We have one for the Airport Land Use Commission, which would begin at nine AM, and then the regular Tulare County Planning Commission would follow that. So we will hold for just one second. Jack's gonna need a microphone, right?
Here, Jack.
Thank you. Roll call and Pledge of Allegiance.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Pitliano.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Aguilar. Absent. Silveira. Absent. Ritchie.
Here.
At this time, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and the Intерre Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Jack, what I'll do is the opening remarks, so that we can move into Airport Land Use. Doug is not going to be here today, so can you chair that portion?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration, so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearings, items must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And also, please, as a courtesy to all of us here today, if you have a cellphone, please turn the cellphone off or put it in a mute position. We're going to begin this morning with the Airport Land Use Commission, and Mr. Jack Ritchie is Vice Chair of that commission, so I will turn that over to Jack at this point. And we're going to go to Item Three, Jack, which is Approval of Minutes.
Thank you very much. The Airport Land Use Commission portioned this meeting to order, and at this time, we will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of July 21st, 2010.
I'll make a motion to that.
I second that.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Roll call, please.
Gong.
All right, roll call vote.
abstained.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Abstained.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pitliano.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Ritchie.
Yes.
Correspondence and information for, information only, no action required. Is there any correspondence?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Laboo, Planner Three, Resource Management Agency, and Airport Land Use Commission staff. You'll notice that there is nothing under this item. This has been consistent, and you'll also notice that there hasn't been an Airport Land Use Commission meeting for some time. That's because there's been a significant drop in the amount of project referrals received near the airport areas, and with that, a majority of the projects that are received are outside airport zones, so that's why there's nothing on there. That's it.
I assume the same holds true for, item for discussion, are you item five? Hearing none, we will move to Item Six, which is an action item. It is Conditional Use Permit 2011-03 and Variance 2011-01, City of Visalia, for consistency determination, Conditional Use Permit in Variance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
At this time, I need to recuse myself from this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also need to recuse myself. I've done site plan review project on this for my employer, City of Visalia.
I see. So noted?
Again, good morning, Commissioners. The project before you today is a Conditional Use Permit Number 2011-03 and Variance 2011-01. The referral was from the City of Visalia, and the applicant was Western Milling. The requested action before your commission today is to find the project consistent with the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Plan, what we call the CALUP for short. The project submitted before your commission today, again, is a Conditional Use Permit and a variance for the rehabilitation of industrial facility to allow for a dog food manufacturing facility. It's located in an existing industrial area near Highway 99, and it's, the project involves the addition of three new buildings. When I get to the site plan, I'll show that more specifically. And it also includes two dry material storage tanks. The reason this is before your commission is because of the proximity to the airport, and also the height impacts of the two dry material storage tanks. Here's a project vicinity map on the screen, and it kind of shows where the project is near Highway 99, and it's on the edge of the Visalia city limits where the dotted line This is the site plan. In the middle of the screen, there's a darker area, and those are where the proposed additional buildings would be. As you can see, basically, on the right half of the subject site is where the structures would be. The vacant portions of the site would be to the west and the southern, southwest portion of the site. The darker shading is a truck drive, so it is not considered structural coverage. With ALUC, or Airport Land Use Commission analysis, staff goes through the four different areas and breaks it down. The first is safety analysis, and staff review found the project is consistent with the Airport Land Use Plan and the relevant policies for safety. It was identified that the project is located in the H horizontal zone. That zone has specific policy, which is located in the staff report, that includes a 20% structural coverage limitation in areas that are under the traffic pattern, and also prohibits the use of flammable materials. This is a Airport Land Use compatible use, according to the Airport Land Use Plan, because of its industrial use, and as well, most of the planned facility is already existing. Here is a safety zone map, and you'll see the project site is just to the north of the Approach and Approach Transition Zones, but it is located completely in the horizontal zone, and the community of Goshen is to the northwest there. The second area of review is noise analysis, and staff review found it was consistent with noise compatibility tables in the Airport Land Use Plan, and as well, it was outside the noise contours, even though it was directly adjacent to those noise contours. This is the Visalia Airport, or, excuse me, the Visalia Airport Noise Contours, and it's right where the CNL 60 dB, that's exactly where the project site is. And my apologies, as part of our Airport Land Use Plan update, we will be updating these noise maps, so they're a lot easier to see, and for both the public and the commission and myself. As I had mentioned, the Airport Land Use Compatibility Chart, last category, manufacturing, it is a normally acceptable use, as according to the plan. The third area is traffic pattern analysis, and staff review found this consistent as well. Going back to that safety zone policy, it's a 20% structural coverage limitation. Staff looked at the site plan, and on it identified the total structural coverage. That total structural coverage equaled 98,045 square feet of building area on the total site. It is three different parcels, but the whole project site would be a 15.58 structural coverage. If you broke it down by parcel, two of the parcels are significantly lower, and one is hovering, averaging just above 20%, but taking into the whole project site, it's 15%. The buildings are clustered, and most are existing. Your Airport Land Use Commission looks at new uses and new structures. It does not look at existing, and it, and under state law, we do look at infill development. Again, this will be laid out in the update coming up. The traffic pattern, as shown here, shows that it goes directly over and next to the site. And the last area is the height analysis. Staff did a review of the project with the height policies, and staff uses the FAR Part 77 guidelines and other policies within the Airport Land Use Plan. That includes a maximum structural height of 150 feet. In this project, they're proposing that there are two structures, and they're going to be dry material storage tanks, and each of those, one is 70 and one is 90 feet in height. The distributors and bucket elevators on top of that, on top of those tanks, will make the total height to 120 to 140 feet. This is still below the 150 feet. The project is located approximately 4,500 feet northwest of the Visalia Airport runway, and that was taken into account, and staff does acknowledge the diagram that's in our Airport Land Use Plan, and that 5,000 feet is at the end, so it would be covered by that 150 feet. As well, the Visalia Airport Master Plan, and in the staff reports, I, in the presentation so far, I haven't mentioned what was in the staff report regarding our Airport Land Use Plan update. Right now, we are going through a update, we have administrative draft, and with that, there, when the Airport Land Use Commission does updates, state law directs that Airport Master Plans and the noise contours in those prepared master plans for the different counties covered, or for the different airports covered under the county plan, that those be utilized. And so, staff, in the process, and over the last couple years, as you are familiar with, has looked at the Visalia Airport Master Plan for projects within those relevant airport influence areas, and staff analysis indicated that it is located in the B1 and C zones within the Visalia Airport Master Plan. That has a specific policy with it that requires navigation easement dedication, deed noticing, and proper location from the runway, and this project meets all of those. The deed noticing is primarily for residential, and again, this is industrial project, but it should be relevantly noted as part of the review. And this is a scan of the different zones. Again, it's at the top portion of the screen, in the, right at the corner of the B1 and B2 zones. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the different categories of review, safety, noise, traffic pattern, and height policies, and the project also appears to be compatible with the Visalia Airport Master Plan. I did want to mention that in the audience today, we do have Mario Sepuentes from the City of Visalia, an airport manager of Visalia Airport, and as well, we have the applicant and the agent, so if you have any additional questions, they can help out with that. The requested action before your commission today is to find the project consistent with the Airport Land Use Plan, and this is the staff recommendation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jason. There's no hearing scheduled for this, but I think if anyone wants to make comment on it, now would be appropriate time to do so. None. It would also be appropriate to motion to adopt the ALUC Resolution 11-001.
I'll make that motion to go with Option One, as Jason recommended.
Motion by Mr. Elliot.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Ritchie.
Yes.
Did we do this all in one motion, or do we need two?
They're both in the same resolution. Okay. That being taken care of. Item Seven, Planning Commission Discussion Items Requested for Future Agenda Items. Does anybody have anything for future agenda items? Hearing none. Time adjourn, the Airport Land Use Commission portion of the meeting, and turn it over to the Planning Commission.
Tulare County Planning Commission is now in session for April 13th, 2011. Do we have a roll call, please?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Pitliano.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Aguilar. Absent.
Would you all please rise for the, did we do that?
They did that.
Can we do that again?
No.
Want to be official again, twice? Okay. Item Two, Public Comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item appearing, not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration, so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Also, please, again, if you have a cellphone, turn those cellphones off. Thank you very much. Item Three, Approval of Minutes. Approve the minutes for March 23rd, 2011. Do I have a motion on approving those minutes?
I would move for approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pitliano.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Thank you. Item Four, Consent Calendar. We have nothing on the consent calendar this, this time, so we will move on to public hearings. Item Five, A PSP 09-013, Jesse Gutierrez, a special use permit to allow an agricultural service establishment, commercial trucking operation, and incidental vehicle maintenance and repair on an approximate two-acre portion of a 4.38 acre site in the AE40, Exclusive Agricultural 40-Acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the northeast corner of Road 36 and Avenue 236, approximately six miles west of Tulare. And our contact today is Dana Metlin. Good morning, Dana.
Good morning. Commissioners, the item before you today, as mentioned, is a request from Jesse Gutierrez to allow an agriculture service establishment, which is a commercial trucking operation and incidental vehicle maintenance and repair on a two-acre portion of a 4.38 acre site in the AE40 zone. Section 9.7 of the zoning ordinance allows agricultural service establishments primarily engaged in performing services to farmers or farm-related activities in planting, harvesting, storage hauling, and equipment repair and maintenance in the AE40 zone, subject to the approval of a special use permit. And the project site is located west of the City of Tulare, on the northeast corner of Road 36 and Avenue 236. Site is zoned AE40, and all of the surrounding properties are also zoned AE40. Site contains two mobile homes, a metal building that has been converted to a duplex, which also has a carport attached to the back end, also a shop, a shed, and two sea trains. The surrounding properties contain agriculture and rural residences, and the property directly to the south is owned by the county and is the location of an old dump site. Aerial view.
Dana, is this activity currently going on, on the site?
Pardon me?
Is this activity occurring now on the site?
No, it's closed down. The, well, what, the activity of trucking?
Yes.
Yes, it is. There was a violation that was issued back in 2008, I believe, and B208-088, and if the, this project is approved, then that violation would be closed.
Bring them into compliance.
But this is a remedy to that violation, yes.
And, excuse me, was the violation with Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes.
And also, can I, it looks like there's a lot more buildings on that piece than...
This site, this is a mobile home right there, and...
Oh, that's not, that's not the piece in the back, then?
Yes, this is the shop.
Uh-huh.
The open, I think it's open on three sides. Can't recall, I was out, out there quite a while ago. And, you know, I apologize, I actually had pictures of this site when I did visit a couple of years, and I forgot to bring them, so, completely skipped my mind. But this is the shed, the shed, where the maintenance occurs, and there's a sea train behind that, there's a little sea train, I think, here, there's a mobile home around in this area, and this is that metal shop building. The front portion has been converted to two, well, residences, apartments. Parking is on the back side. There's a garage area back here, so...
Are those residences?
Those residences are all permitted.
Okay.
And they were permitted previously to Mr. Gutierrez purchasing the property. Other questions?
Does Mr. Gutierrez own any other property that's adjacent to this, or is...
No, he does not.
Have all the fees been paid on that, in terms of the...
Pardon me?
The fees, have all, they all been brought up to snuff on that?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dana. This is a public hearing, and I will open public testimony. If the applicant is here and would like to speak, you may do so at this time.
Don't believe the applicant is...
Not here?
Like me to...
Is anyone here that is for or against or opposed to the project? All right. So can we summarize the actions that we're looking for?
Yes. If the head goes, the site plan. Aerial view. Another aerial view.
Is that a pool back there? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes, there, let's see, how do I go backwards? Yes, well...
Oh, okay.
It does have, is a little pool here.
Oh, no, I was looking up.
This is the neighbor.
Oh, that's not their property.
That's not their property.
Okay, that, that was what I was...
There is a pool here.
Okay.
Aerial view, there's a dairy up here, and there actually is a dairy down here on the other, behind that Google sign.
Did you hear from the neighbors on this? Any response?
I, no, I have not received any calls or letters.
Had there been any complaints prior to the violations from any of the neighbors?
No, not to my knowledge. I mean, I don't know how the violation was noticed, notified, whether it was a complaint or maybe somebody just driving by from, you know, our code compliance, I don't know. But staff is recommending that you adopt the Resolution Certifying the Negative Declaration as the appropriate environmental document, and conditionally approve Special Use Permit Number PSP 09-013. I did want to mention that there were previously two special use permits on the property that had been granted to the previous property owner, and one of them was for hay storage and sales, and the other one was for liquid feed storage, and those are no longer being utilized on the site, and they have since expired. And this property owner did write a letter just indicating that those uses are not being used on the site, and that his request is strictly for the trucking and the maintenance of those vehicles.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry, so when you say the maintenance of his vehicles, he is not going to do any commercial...
Well, he owns the trucking operation. These, I believe, 17 trucks are his.
And are those going to be parked there also?
Yes, that's what this permit is for, is to allow the parking of all of those commercial trucks. And he does agricultural hauling of silage, and was mentioned in here, there's just really two, maybe four months or six months end of the year during harvest season, when the silage is being harvested, he is trucking that stuff to dairies. So in the spring and in the fall.
But he won't be working on anybody else's?
No one else's, no, that is a condition of approval.
Okay.
I believe.
It should be.
Isn't I then, then I will make it wrong.
Yeah, one more question, Mr. Chair. And we've had no express concern from the neighbors to the east.
We have not.
Okay.
Because there aren't too many neighbors around there.
Still close one there.
There is the one right next door, and I have not heard anything, though.
Okay. Dana, what do they do for washout and cleaning the trucks and stuff, and where does that material, rinse aid, go?
They do not pressure wash any of the vehicles, and I know that that's a condition of approval, that there's no...
So there's not, they don't have any, you know, and they're doing work on the, the maintenance on the stuff, you know, they've got to clean it off to get to it, to work on it?
Well, there is, okay, the shed, it, the shed does have a cement floor. Not quite sure what your question is.
Well, I just wanted to know if there was a, an oil trap or anything like that for any of the water that was being, that had come off these engines and stuff, that, working on it.
I don't, I don't think that this is a real commercial garage, so if you're asking if there's something subsurface for the trap to catch oil, no. I, as I recall, there is not anything like that. I think he would just catch it in a pan, and then put it in a barrel, and then that is disposed of, you know, at a recycling center.
Right, that, that's for your, your used oils and stuff.
Used oils.
I'm talking about the, the washwater coming off of the engine or off of the equipment, and when they wash it, to clean it, to work on it.
Number 29 says, "The surface and subsurface discharges of waste, including but not limited to fuel, oil, and engine fluids related to the maintenance shall not be allowed. All vehicle maintenance shall occur on an impermeable surface so as not to contaminate the soil. Power washing of engine parts and undercarriages of trucks is prohibited."
Okay.
That's in the conditions.
That answer your question?
That answers it. Thank you.
Not a mechanic, I wasn't real sure what you were asking.
Any other questions? I would like to, for council's benefit, close the public testimony. I don't know that I did that. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a comment, so I believe Dana was referring to that condition on 28. And we're seeing as, we're seeing something, I think the trucks, the, the summer, they were just public. Are, the way we see it, what he's doing now is a coincidentally used to have operations, um, destroying trucks. If he were opening it up to the public, it would become a commercial operation.
Right. Thank you.
You can clarify if you want.
No, that, I just saw that, too, so, thank you.
So, Ben, we still have a, well, let's say we still have persons assigned to inspecting this site later to see that they're meeting the conditions?
Yeah, our, our typical practice is to go out one year later. You do that, that's kind of, kind of take it, you go one year later to see what's still been done, and are they still making the... And, uh, it could be the desire that the planning commission is going to get special use permits.
Well, I think it's a good idea, especially in this one where you had a previous violation.
Any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion to adopt one of the three, four, excuse me, four options. Could I have a motion, please?
I think we can start, I'll make a motion on the first one in terms of the negative, to certify the negative deck as the appropriate environmental document. So I'll take option one on that, and so move.
I would second that. Roll call.
Gong.
Uh, yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Philiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
And take care of that second one, move to conditionally approve the proposal, and adopt the resolution, 1B.
I'll second. Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Philiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. We'll move on to item six, there's correspondence and general information. There are no items listed here, therefore we will move to item seven, Director's Report 7A, summary of the Board of Supervisors meeting, meetings from March 29th, 2011, and April 5th, and April 12th, 2011. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. On March 29th, we did not have a board meeting. On April 5th, we did have a significant project completed, which was the second reading of the ordinance, which involved 500 people, and also created a project for... That, that is, there was a 15-day period, 10 days, and then a 30-day, 15 days, and a 30-day period where the people had four minutes to go and get back. So around May 20th was when that was really going to happen. So, the planning commission should really be at least prepared to see an increase in projects part of the year, you know, part of the staff of the previously bonded side company. And in the meantime, we're setting up our reapplication processes to help there is renewed projects result, so we can close earlier in the process than... So that took place on, yeah, I think before they, I think it was a little bit before this, uh, very routine meeting, but we did a few, uh, I don't know, I don't know if they have answered the questions.
Uh, no questions related to this, anything new on the general plan update?
Yeah, uh, there's two updates going on, nothing new, we're, we're still in the same position where staff is going through a mountain of, of, um, in the past, staff was trying to make ambitious plans, and part of it for workshop, and then been buried, and the, and the daily work, it's kind of a, I'm not the one who's really in, although I think it's all, it's kind of a mine room, daily drive, or staff, a team of staff who was sort of, those comments, 20,000, 20,000, 200,000, 200,200, 200,000, and, uh, and one of the time, kind of, rest each one and characters each other, one, maybe, maybe, and so they're, what I've heard is they're very close to finishing the only last sequence, but, um, I think they're kind of hesitant now to set the workshop date, because every time they do it, they cut at this point, and, 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 they didn't want to definitely, and that, that, as soon as they're done with the comments, they're out, they can shut off. I was told, we probably expect something late some of the time. That would give time to finish up the work, and move to the off day. Also, just a wave of announcement, we have, we had 24 projects completed, we have 21 in the garden. We have a lot of projects scheduled, we actually completed a couple of them today. They prepared a video, seen a lot of stuff coming in, and, uh, we have a new animal client starting to move in, which will help prepare a project for all of them. We are taking important reports and devices that will, that will take non-commercial, you know, it will separate non-commercial from commercial, and then you have non-commercial ones that can be industry-led, and that is, it's a simplified process, but it's going to be, it will still be a good, it will be a good industry, it's still a similar process. And the same will be true for our public work stage managers. Our department or another, another body is, is, you know, loan project, maybe the staging area for our offices for the public, this will make it easier to, to get closer to the site, by making it industry-led, you're right. If, if a private, um, company is going to go somewhere, it's going to be, it's going to be, also, just a wave of announcement, we have our planning commission training on May 13th, some of them signed up for that. In fact, it, it filled up faster than we thought, it already filled up a couple of weeks ago, and so we managed to arrange quickly, been to a larger group, and, and, we're still getting a lot of requests, the planning commission is, we're going to have to shut the door in, but we want to open it back up, and any of you who still want to attend that, have to find out, because I was going to have their, their issues, so, we've got them, and other than that, I do have, basically, we have a, 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 I do have a continuation of some power coordination we did on the last meeting. At the request of the R main directors, we're doing some, on, on, just tips and tips on connecting buildings, because we anticipate, sort of, lift a, this, and all these things, and, and, so we do our, 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 our...
A quick question, Mr. Chair, before we start the training. The site plan review process that the county currently is under, what would you say, how many projects do you review annually in that process?
Annually?
Or monthly, just, ballpark?
On a monthly, maybe, the site plan review committee might, uh, provide certain departments. Sometimes, I'd say, this, this month, we're going to have all of them, you know, that one.
And are there any other jurisdictions that are going to this site plan review committee process, taking them to the planning commission, rather than having a separate border, is this sheerly economically driven?
This is following the pattern that VISA, the Department of the Area, they instituted this, the real benefit is instituting the pre-application process. And what we do next, what happens now until the planner and the staff is looking at reviewing the project, it is, it's usually only after we spend a lot of time on it, and a lot of the applicants wonder, when you start finding the project, and it's late in the process, and it's already taken a lot of time. And sometimes you'll find out, so we're there to review, to review, and if there's something, there's a big thing up, it should be, and then have a surprise again. We'll want to do mailers, because there's, uh, immediately before, and it's, with all of the, having staff, and everybody, and really go over, uh, before they spend a lot of time. That will help us in the process, and people can, should help the public experience, not have, you know, see why, and, 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 you know, there may be projects that really don't help out in the life of the community, and we can tell them that we save ourselves a lot of time, we save a lot of money. And if it's, if it works well for the cities, and so we're, we're having that.
And I'm involved with this process in my workplace, but we don't have appointed or elected officials in that process of the site plan review?
Yes, this would not be, it's not intended to be...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I like the process the city VISA has, and I would hope the county has the same policy of charging applicants, because this gives an opportunity for people who have an idea, and what, it's a bad idea, and not have to spend 2,000 bucks to find out. So it's simple, fast, I think, they get the site plan review from the city, and they, they see, you know, work for five to 12 projects a week, and, uh, so all the different departments comment, and, uh, you know, within about 15 minutes whether your project's going to fly, or what hoops you're going to have to jump through. So it's a good process, and, uh, people walk out feeling good. I think a lot of times, people who are in violation of the code are reluctant to come in because they don't have $2,000, $3,000, this way they can bring their project in and, uh, get a, an opinion from the staff. And, uh, it does put a little burden on the staff, because there is some sort of written report that summarizes all the comments, but, uh, it, it's, it's good, and it's more projects, more healthy projects. Do you agree, Charlie?
Oh, absolutely.
Chair, before we move on, I, I don't think we did the minutes for the planning commission for last month, did we?
The approval of the minutes?
Yes, we did.
That was for the airport?
No, we did the minutes, too.
Okay. Then I corrected.
They're already in the can.
It's taxis in red milk?
Yeah, taxis, hurry to meet people.
All right, Mr. Chairman, what I provided you, and frankly, what we were last month, but, uh, just continue on, these are tips and training provided by some planning professionals that may contribute to, uh, planning throughout the state. I took it and just played right, uh, this is what some of the, some of this doesn't necessarily fit perfectly into the system we have already, but, uh, if, if, if these are things in life, it's, 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 it's a quick definition, I mean, it's a public, we're, we're moving over from meetings now to public hearings, uh, public hearing before white options, and public college, uh, and, uh, here is the fundamental process, uh, fundamental life process, and, 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 and,
Which one was it?
The backup, yeah, there we go. Introduce, keep, keep number three.
I haven't seen that done a lot, but that was a recommendation by, by the experts. And there may be organizations where that's, that's common.
Well, it's good in your so-called contentious meetings. That's a good time to do it, because you'll have extra people here, and then they're going to speak anyway. So a lot of times, the chair would introduce those people just so the audience could know who they are.
During those meetings, we want to make sure they know where the council sits.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll do that, I just wanted to be clear on that. I don't have a problem with that.
Kind of hidden behind the wall over here.
I think that's good, in a lot of meetings, people come for the first time, and there's a lot of things going on, and people are talking to people, and nobody knows who it is. So, you know, I'll try to make sure I can interject and clarify if someone wants to know, or if the audience needs to know who's talking. We'll do that, and we'll do that upfront as much as possible. Thank you. 7B, Ben, any planning director updates?
No, that, that...
Okay, thank you. Item eight, action items, there are no items listed. So I'll move on to nine, planning commission discussion items and requests for future agenda items. I'll just make a comment, I think you all got this in the mail. I just, I was out last week, out of town, but the California County Planning Commissioner Conference, Spring Conference, did you all get the notice on that? May 21st, looks very interesting. In Clarksville, California, I wasn't sure where that was, I had to look that up. And that is a, an event that will address climate action, agricultural cluster housing, solar facility ordinances, wetland conversions, and ag districts. So it's kind of a, an interesting cross-section of topics. And I would urge everyone to go. That's all I have in terms of any items. Does anyone else, else have anything?
Mr. Chair, just clarification, under separate cover, I received this notice, I guess, for the...
Solar...
The solar, or the Teapot Dome landfill, gas-powered production facility?
Oh, you did?
Anybody else?
Yes, I received that.
I didn't know.
Ben, or...
That for a future agenda?
Yeah, is that a future agenda thing, is, is that for noticing, or what? It was under separate cover, separate mail.
Uh, Mr. Chair, with your views, I'm not sure I have worked on that one. We may have a project plan, but...
We do have a project plan at Teapot Dome, and the mitigated negative declaration is out right now.
Okay.
The staff report, I am working on it. It's not yet scheduled, but it should be, I hope, next month. So the public review on that ends, I think, April 30th?
So this was just notice, then?
Yes, that was just notice that if you want to read the MND, it's available.
Thank you.
Are there any other items for future, how's our agenda look for April 27th?
Um, we don't have any items scheduled, so if you want to pick a motion to cancel that meeting.
Do not, may I have a motion to cancel the meeting on April 27th, 2011?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DeS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Philiano?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Therefore, if we're canceling that meeting, do we want to set up a tentative date? We'll just move to the next calendar date, what is that, Maria?
May 11th, yeah. May 11th is...
May 11th. So I will adjourn this meeting. You have one more thing?
I'd just like to render my fellow commissioners, at some point, we're going to listen to some testimony on Yoko Valley. There's a book that you can get, there's a nice historical bookstore at Exeter, it's called Yoko Valley. Anyway, it gives a nice little history of that valley, and, you know, it's well, well, well worth reading. I had never been there, and it certainly gave me a lot of information about the historical native people who lived there. And, you know, you should pick it up and read it, so, Yoko Valley.
Thank you. We will adjourn this meeting of the Tulare County Planning Commission to reconvene on May 11th, 2011.